Alright, it should be good.
Yep, I see that we're now streaming on YouTube. So I'll call the meeting to order. This is the Village of Victor zoning board meeting for September 16th, 2020 via Zoom. The first item on our agenda is a salute to the flag. So we'll do that as usual, Stan. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands. One nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. I can actually see a flag in the distance, so it wasn't as weird as it might appear.
We always told our scouts that if you're ever out and you need to do the pledge of allegiance, there's always a flag on the move.
How about that? Thanks, Brian. The next item on our agenda is the acceptance of minutes for the August 19th, 2020 meeting. Is there any, did the board need any discussion on that?
No.
Nope.
Would anyone make a motion?
I'll move to accept the minutes.
Is there a second?
I'll second it.
All in favor? I. All opposed? None, so carried. Alright, moving along. Item four on the agenda is 32 School Street. That's the ESL Federal Credit Union. I'll read the legal notice into the record. It says, "A public hearing will be held before the Village of Victor Zoning Board of Appeals remotely via the Zoom app and can be viewed on the Village YouTube channel on Wednesday, September 16th, 2020 at 7:00 PM to consider the application of 32, 20, and 0 School Street for ESL Credit Union for area variances to the Village of Victor zoning code pertaining to signage and building height specifically." 170-7A2, the accessory structure height for the ATM teller kiosk is 19 feet versus the allowed 12 feet. And then 130-5B subsection 1A, three wall signs of 68.25 square feet each for a total of 204.75 square feet, whereas only 30 square feet is allowed and only on sides facing a street or parking lot. And one wall sign of 20.125 square feet on an accessory structure, whereas only 12.5 square feet is allowed. Also, we'll be considering the 130-5Bs, section 3, two-directional signs containing arrows and wording other than "in," "out," "entrance," or "exit." So at this time, the general public cannot be present, obviously, but they can comment on the Village of Victor zoning board channel. And that is something that Marty will be, and Roseanne will be letting us know if anyone has any comments when we get to that section of the, of the presentation. They also were available to comment via email or via US Mail at 60 East Main Street. And if they had any questions, they could also call Roseanne. This is from Sean Sanders, the chairperson of the Village of Victor Board, Zoning Board of Appeals. We'll also have a lengthy referral from the code enforcement officer, which I assume everyone has seen and we can refer to during the meeting, so I won't read that into the record. So at this time, if you, if, if Rich or Joe, if you guys want to give us kind of a overview of why we're here and what you're hoping to achieve, then that would be great.
Great, thank you. My name's Joe Burkhart. With us tonight at Marathon is Rich Tiddy, who is the civil engineer. Sean McGuire from Lobella Associates, who is doing the architecture. And Peter Woods and Trish Resone from ESL. As you mentioned, this is an application for ESL branch to be located at 32 School Street. Just as a clarification, the ATM structure that exists on Route 96 today will remain. This is supplementing that. We've been to Ontario County Planning Board and received a positive referral from them. And we've had a preliminary hearing with the planning board to share our thoughts. What we'd like to do tonight is just briefly give you an overview of the three variances from our side. Sean will talk to those that apply to the architecture and Rich to the signage. And then briefly touch on the test for the variances and answer any questions you may have. So if that makes sense, I'll ask Sean to run through the first two variances.
Hello, I'm Sean McGuire from Lobella Associates. Let's see here. So in regards, I guess, to the first variance here for the accessory building structure height, we're at just under 19 feet versus the 12 feet. Our, the drive-through, basically you have 10 and a half feet for clearance for a vehicle to drive under it. And then the remaining portion of the building height is the structure and roof. And we have a gable roof on the building versus a flat roof. And the purpose of that is to kind of tie it in to the surrounding buildings and adjacent properties, which have gable roofs on them as well. And it's also the new prototype for our drive-through tellers. In regards to the wall signs, again, the signage that we have is, you know, 368 square foot signage based on a rectangular size for that. And the signs themselves are actually curved. So the actual square footage of the sign is roughly about 57 square feet. And each of those signs are the new prototype size for all the new branches that ESL are providing. The drive-through teller has one signage on the one end of the gable, which is roughly 20 square feet. And again, that, that also is a standard prototype size for that. And the gable roof on that isn't that large. So for us to go with a smaller sign on there, it may be, I guess, difficult to see it. So the size is proportionate to being able to read the sign. Anyone has any questions?
So you said the ATM teller drive-up stand there, the, it's a peach roof. And then there are, are there those dormers on that roof as well?
Yes, there is.
So it's similar to the one on the Hudson Avenue pictures and
Correct.
Because I have, I saw those and I guess that, yeah, that would be helpful. Sorry. Put it right in front of you.
Yeah, we lose Sean, but that's the, and we're referring to, and then here are the two gables. The dormers on the other side.
So the peak of the roof is the high point of the roof or the gable?
This is 189.
Okay. And the gables don't extend over that at all?
They do not.
And this is pretty standard for your, what you guys are doing, your new ATM teller drive-up? Is that?
Yes.
It's not, it's not any higher for any reason for the
No, it's not.
Okay. And that's, that's the height that you're comfortable with as far as clearance for, for vehicles and things like that?
Yes.
It's the same.
Yeah, it's the same ones we used at Fairport as well.
Gotcha.
And, and the building material is the same as we're using on the main branch building as well. And, and in regards to the dormers on the building itself, that's more or less to, you know, break up, I guess, the long length of just the fiberglass roof shingle.
And the, yeah, no, I think they look, they look nice for sure. So does anyone on the board have any specific questions or concerns with, you know, we're talking about the height of the ATM? Or, or anything else that gets part of this presentation? I mean, a lot of it seems pretty self-explanatory. Does the board need any clarification on what they're hoping to achieve? I mean, the height's self-explanatory, the, the wall signs, just, could you just be clear on the wall signs? You're going to put a sign on the north side of the building, which I guess is facing closest facing to Main. Yep.
Facing 96.
So we have, wow, this sign here, this here is facing west, and this is the entrance into the bank itself.
That's facing the parking lot, then?
Correct, yes. And the only side that we do not have a signage is on School Street. And that's, that's the elevation here.
Right. For some reason, I'm just staring at Brendan crossing. I lost the picture.
Can you hear me or not, Sean?
Yep, I can now.
But I guess the only question I have is the ATM kiosk, ESL is proposing signage. I guess we're calling it the north and south sides at the peak. What, what's, what's the purpose of the signage on the north side? I know that, that fits in the characteristic and design of what ESL typically does. But it, above the shed, it's not visible at all from Main Street. I'm just wondering why, why, why is that necessary?
To clarify, there's only, I think your question was regarding the ATM drive-through structure. There is only one sign on the parking lot side, and the other side does not have a sign.
Okay, perfect, thank you.
Sean, quick question.
Okay.
We've got a comment on the, the YouTube channel from a resident who's requesting to, if the applicant can hold up the, the elevations and then the site plan, just so they can get an idea of bearings.
Yeah, I think with a little shift, if you don't mind showing that, Sean, with the, just a little bit of, a little explanation as to what side looks like what. I mean, I saw it at the planning board meeting, but I think it would be beneficial to the board and to anyone watching, so.
So you'll come in off School Street into the bank here, drive through the parking lot. And then there's four lanes here. You've got three here to drive through, the drive-through teller, and then a bypass lane. So at the north end of the gable roof, there is not a sign. And the only signage that we do have is at the south end here.
So it's not immediately adjacent to the building?
It is not.
No. It's detached.
Okay.
Yeah, there's video screens on the drive-through there that they'll talk to the tellers within the branch itself.
Okay.
And then as far as the building, no signage on School Street. Signage at the north end, signage at the entrance into the bank, and then signage at the south side.
Could you, could you also show those elevations of the, yeah, thank you.
Yeah, so School Street side. And then the north elevation, so as you come into the parking lot drive, you'll see that signage there. And then from the south side coming up School Street heading north, this is the elevation you'll see there. You'll see the signage. And then once you're within the branch parking lot, the entrance into the bank itself, we have the signage above the entrance.
Do you guys happen to have the directional signs that are, or the parking lot signs, an illustration of those somewhere?
That is actually detailed in the site plans, but I, I don't know how well this is going to show up.
Yeah, it's a little washed out, but yeah, thank you. So, and Marty, the only reason that we're, we need to, they need a variance for that is because it has something other than those four words, which are specifically referred to in the code. So if these signs were to have just enter, exit, entrance, they would, they would not require a, but because it says "drive-up tellers ATM," it needs to have a variance, correct?
That is correct.
So does anyone from the board have any concerns or more questions for the applicant?
So north of the tellers there, there's like a hedgerow there. Will that block some of the teller from the other neighbors there?
There's also a fence that's provided along there.
That you guys are putting in?
Yes, it'll be a new fence.
And we actually have revised plans ready to go into the village that also extends the fence down this side also.
And that's a six-foot vinyl, vinyl fence, correct?
Correct.
And I think the question is those, those plantings are accurate. There will be some type of planting between you and the Main Street neighbors?
That's correct.
Sean, did we receive any letters of opposition to this project?
We did, we received one email, which I'll read into the record. That it says, "Hi, this is Mark Turner from Turner Properties, New York LLC. My property is at 87 to 89 West Main Street, which borders the proposed ESL building next door. I would come in person to the meeting, but you noticed states only the email or letters are acceptable. I would very much like to see more information on the overall build as well as signage for the property, since the existing site has looked terrible for years and is in a state of disrepair. I would oppose such height of 19 foot to a sign so close to my property. Additionally, I'd like to better understand positioning of the 68 feet of signage and its viability from, which I think he means visibility, from the residents. My home is a two-family residential property, and I'm not sure that this is in character with the other buildings in the village regards Mark Turner." I'll also tell you that Roseanne replied to this email saying that he would get a copy, could have a copy of the plans, and that he could also come in and see them in the village hall, which he did not. But I assume that he's probably on this, and this is actually very, the site plan and things, I think, are, make this more clear as to where signs would be positioned, where the ATM would be positioned. That 80, the, the property that belongs to Mr. Turner is that white, big white barn, and then the, the two-family home that's just
Do we, do we know the height of Mr. Turner's accessory structure, which immediately borders this ATM kiosk that we're talking about? It's pretty close to 19 feet, isn't it?
It's just slightly over 19 feet. At the peak.
Okay.
And also sits up grade and elevation just a little bit too as compared to our site.
And I walk the property today, and I can tell you that the existing structures that have been there for years, and they truly are in a state of disrepair, I would say are at least 19 feet and probably higher in certain places. So, and they are immediately on the property line. So I understand it, I understand the concern, but I think with the visual of the, the site plan here and the fact that that 18-foot nine there is off of the property line and going to be immediately adjacent to that other barn with some type of shrubbery in between, I think, I mean, I don't want to dismiss his concern, but I would say that that probably mitigates it. And it's not, it's not also unusual to have a structure that, that's height in the village. You know, the allowable 12 feet is, is, just wouldn't work for this. Tim, you gotta take yourself off mute if you're talking. There we go. Just a quick question about the signs themselves. Are they, are they backlit? I don't know the technical term, but what, what will this building look like at night?
Um, as far as the, the signage, the, I can show you the pictures here, sorry. The signage here has three gooseneck light fixtures on the wall that'll shine on a wood-built sign. And that's the same with the other two on the main branch building. The, the signage on the drive-through teller will be backlit. And that does face into the parking lot, not to the neighbors.
Thank you.
Yep.
So why no signage on School Street? You can make it a lot smaller because it's closer to the road.
That's due to the, we, we had, we had we had to create a visual two-story portion of the, the elevation there. And typically, that's where we would have had the signage. But we extended the window facade up to make the appearance of a two-story building there.
And, and that was at the request of the Village of Victor and the Planning Board?
Correct.
Anyone else got any questions or concerns? If not, we'll, we'll open it to the public. Marty, is there anyone that has any questions or concerns that are watching on YouTube or?
The only questions that were posed was just, as I stated earlier, someone wanted to see the site plan and elevations. That's all that's on there right now.
And then Roseanne, if we could just also note that, and keep that in the record, that letter from Mark, the email from Mark Turner. And then I'm going to, I'll close the, the public portion of the meeting. And then if there's no complaints from the board, I will, I mean, obviously, we have to go through the balancing test. And I think in doing so, we'll have some more discussion with the applicant. But, so there are, there's a couple of ways we can do this, and Marty, feel free to chime in. If, if the board is, is comfortable with what's being proposed in both the ATM height and the various signage, we could do one motion that covers all of these. If not, we can go one by one and, and do a motion for each. So just keep that in mind as we're going through the, the balancing test, that there is an easy button here, but it's not, we don't have to do it that way. So if we want to go through the balancing test, the, obviously, everyone on the board knows that we have to consider the following five things. Whether the benefit can be achieved by other means feasible to the applicant. I mean, I think that's one that they probably, they probably can. I mean, you could get away with some smaller signs. I'm not sure the ATM could be any lower. I think there could be potentially fewer signs. But I also don't know that it would have the same effect to the applicant, and I'm not sure that these signs have any negative impact on the, on the community. Brendan, you're muted.
I think the ATM could have a flat roof, but I think it's much more desirable the way it's proposed. I like, it, it looks attractive, it fits into the neighborhood, it matches the building that they're proposing. I think it's desirable.
I agree. I think these are all kind of tied together, and they seem to be sized appropriately. The, these signs don't, I mean, although they, they exceed, you know, what's allowed for the size of the building, I, I think it looks, I think they look great.
But they exceeded by like 300%.
Well, I don't argue that it's substantial. But I don't think it's, I mean, as we go through this, that there's, it's an undesirable change to the neighborhood or it's a detriment to the neighborhood. I mean, honestly, you are free to disagree.
There's certainly other ways to make it much smaller. By putting But one thing that I think about is we saw, I don't know if it's appropriate to bring recent cases into question, but we saw a garage recently. And a garage is an imposing figure, it could tower over somebody's next door. It, it produces runoff that can, you know, to the detriment of a neighboring property. Signage is signage, and to me, it just feels different. I'm not as concerned with the size of the ATM kiosk. I don't necessarily see that as material. I think that the size of the signs, there's no question, it's a big number, it's a big percentage. But I look at the detriment to the neighborhood, and I think you have to balance that to some extent.
Thank you, Brendan. So then we also have to consider whether it's an undesirable change in the neighborhood or the character or to nearby properties. I mean, I think obviously the existing property is undesirable, and I think that this will be an improvement. And I don't think that what they're asking for, whether it's the signage or the height of the ATM, will have any negative effect on the neighborhood.
I agree.
I agree, and I would also add that, I mean, there, there could be another application that's a three-story building or a two-story building. So this, I don't know what you would classify this as, maybe a story and a half or something like that with very attractive architect.
Well, I, I, I agree. I think it's important to note also that there's no signage facing Main Street other than on the proposed building, which is not visible from Main Street. There's no signage facing School Street, which I'm shocked. And I, I think that, that means a lot to me.
Well, we figured, you know, people coming in off of Route 96, they'll see the signage on the building, north facade. And then the same coming up School Street towards 96, they'll see the signage on the south end. So we felt, you know, there wasn't a need to put a sign on School Street elevation there, which we could have, you know, another portion of the building, but it lends itself to be at the area where we extended the windows up. So we decided not to put signage on that elevation.
Excellent. The next item in the balancing test is whether the request is substantial. And I would agree with David that, or I think I'm agreeing with David that, that it is substantial. Both the height and the variance for the height of the kiosk, and then also the sign, the additional signage and size of the signs does make this request substantial.
I agree.
Agreed. I see, I see head nodding, so we'll call
I agree.
Yeah. The next item is whether or not the request will have adverse physical or environmental effects. And I, again, I don't think it will. We also had a report given to us that it won't have any type of adverse. If anything, it's cleaning up potential environmental effects, so which is
I was just going to ask, Sean, are there any environmental issues associated with the property?
I'll let Rich speak here. Sorry.
There is nothing in the There's nothing in the ground that we have any environmental issues. The building itself does have some abatement that's going to be required within the buildings prior to demolition. But as far as the ground, we've done a phase one and a phase two and have not encountered anything.
Great. You guys froze on us, but I'll assume that you can still hear us. You're back.
I assume there's drainage gonna be in that parking lot somewhere.
Oh yeah, all the, all the, Brian, all the stormwater stuff, all that is taken care of by code enforcement and by planning. So, but yeah, there absolutely is. And I don't know, I mean, is there, is there a short answer to that ESL?
Yes, actually there's a retention that's being put in. Actually, the property, property to the north of us just drains across the property today. So we've put in a basin to help collect that and then we're taking the water out into the storm line on School Street, but we're managing the outflow of that.
Great. The next item on the balancing test and final item is whether the alleged difficulty is self-created. Yeah, that's typically it is self-created. You know, the, obviously it doesn't mean, it doesn't rule out the variance, but you know, I think they could, they could certainly build a building or someone could build a building that fits within the code. It probably couldn't be a bank, but I would, I would say that I think it is, it is self-created.
Agreed.
I agree.
All right, does anyone from the board have any other questions for the applicant?
No.
No.
Nope.
All right, here, then here comes the, the fun part. Does anyone have a, like to make a motion? Or have, have a motion, we could start a motion that we could all chip, chime in on? And Marty, I know you can't make a motion, but you said, you, you said that there is a way that we could do lump this all into one. I know I mentioned that earlier.
I think if, if the board was agreeable to approving all of the proposed variances, the resolution could be written in such a manner that it included them all and therefore the, the motion can be just to approve the, the resolution. I don't, I haven't seen a resolution, so I, I can't speak to that, but I would think that if you're going to approve all of them, that, that could be done through one motion.
Thanks. So with that guidance, is there anyone from the board that would like to make a motion or would at least start it? I don't see any heads moving, nodding. I don't see any mouths moving.
Well, I'll, I'll make a motion that we approve the three variance requests for the property at thirty two School Street. I guess, where do we go from there?
Brian, can I jump in? Sean, what, what's the exact height of the ATM kiosk? This says nineteen feet and I thought you said it's, it's a little less than nineteen feet.
Yeah.
Eighteen nine. To the peak of the roof.
Thank you.
Yeah, I think that, is that numbers? Are we specific, you want to be specific is where you're going with that to, to the accessory height for the, to be eighteen foot nine inches versus, versus the nineteen feet?
Yes.
Yes, correct.
And we, and we might be able to sum that up by just, by just saying that we're referring to submitted site plan.
Sean.
Yes.
As a suggestion, because I know this is a somewhat complicated application as far as what's being requested. I would be happy to work with Roseanne next time we're, we're at Village Hall that we can kind of take some of the, the verbiage from my referral notes. Maybe pare that down a little bit to write the resolution in such a way that it covers all of the requirements for the applicant and, and their proposed variances. And I don't want to put words in any of the board members mouths, but you, you could simply refer to the referral notes from code enforcement as a, as part of your motion for approval.
That sounds great.
Now, I, I just had a question. Are we within five hundred feet of Route ninety six?
We are, but it's already been to the county.
It has been, okay.
Yeah.
One other question on the, the in and outsigns. Are they still within the size of the signs, still less than the signs allowed?
Yes.
Okay.
So with Marty's guidance, can we make a resolution that refers to the referral comments from the code, Village of Victor Code Enforcement Officer? Brian, you're, you're, you were doing great.
Yeah, thanks. I'm, I'm, I'm looking at that for all right now. So. So what you're saying is that we can move to approve the requested variances.
And the requested area variances.
As outlined in code enforcement's referral letter?
I would say as outlined in the legal notice and the Village of Victor, you know, code enforcement comments.
Dated September tenth, twenty twenty.
Yes. How you doing with that, Roseanne?
That's fine.
Brian, is that, is that your motion?
Yes, that is my motion.
Is there?
Let's hear Roseanne read that back to us though.
And, and I'm sorry, Brian, before you do that, Roseanne, Brendan, did you have another question or comment?
Yeah, I'm just saying procedurally, we've never done this before. You're okay with this? It, it feels a little different. I'm okay with it. I just want to make sure that you're okay with it.
Well, I think that if anyone, I think it's valuable, everyone has the code enforcement comments. And then so specifically, we've already addressed the eighteen feet nine inches. And then the sign, we've looked at the signage as, as, I guess maybe we could add that to the, to the motion is to add as, and as illustrated in the, and I don't know if it's the site plan, it's not probably the right term, but they did give us this, the dimensions and it's. Richard Sean, what, what is, what is the, what are the, where it shows the signs and where they're going to be located? It's not called a site plan, but it's.
Building elevations?
Yeah.
I'm, I'm primarily looking at the site plan. It's not signed, it's not final, but it's a site plan. Shows Main Street to the north, School Street to the east. That's, that's what we're looking at, right?
Site plan doesn't say where the signs are gonna be.
Submitted in the package that, that we sent in with our application was the site plans, the building elevations, the floor plans, as well as the sign plan. And that was a, a package of drawings that, that covered all those.
Or this project.
Right.
Correct.
Correct.
That was all part of the application.
Yeah, and I, I think primarily, well, we could reference that, but we referenced the site plan.
Would you classify as preliminary or final?
See, I have a building, I have a building layout. I have each elevation. And I have the elevations of the the, the drive up teller and the ATM. And it, and it shows the, the specific signage and specific sizes with that. I think if we refer to that. Or proposed floor plans and the proposed building, and the proposed, as proposed in on the document from LaBella.
I think the big one for the ATM kiosk is SK dash four, drawing number SK dash four, which shows, shows the elevations. That's the eighteen nine and also the signage on the kiosk.
Yep.
The others, we don't necessarily care about, well, except for signage, I guess.
Yeah, we do on the other drawings, SK page, I think all of them, I mean, we don't care about page one, but we do care about page two, page three and page four.
SK two, three, four, yep.
Yep. So I think you're right. I think if we refer, if I'm, I'm comfortable, if we refer to it with, you know, code enforcement's comments, with the specific site plan here, proposed building, I'm sorry, with the site plan and building elevations, that I think that's, that's, that's more than enough detail. I'm comfortable, is, anyone else on the board comfortable doing it that way?
Yes.
Yes.
Great. All right, Roseanne, what, can you just give us back kind of where we're at?
I would just go by the legal notice and Marty's comments. So I was just gonna say, Brian makes a motion to approve the three variant requests for the property at thirty two School Street as outlined in the legal notice and the Village of Victor Code Enforcement, enforcement comments.
I would say as.
Shown in the site plan and building elevations provided.
Yes. I would say, I mean, these are dated July fourteen, twenty twenty. So those, add the plans as, and guys, yes, this isn't gonna change, correct?
No, it's not.
So as illustrated in the July fourteenth, twenty twenty drawings. Got that, Row?
Yep.
Does anyone need to hear it again?
Yeah, let's go one more time.
All right.
Brian makes a motion to approve three variants requests for the property at thirty two School Street as outlined in the legal notice and the Village of Victor Code Enforcement comments. As shown in the site plan and building elevations as illustrated in the July fourteenth, twenty twenty plans.
Sounds good. And, and then again with Marty can, and, and Roseanne can get together and add some of the meat to that, which gives us a specific numbers and, and things like that for each one.
Sean, I sent you an email a while ago. I don't know if you followed up with Reed. You don't believe I need to abstain, do you?
Nope, neither. I asked about Reed and, and Tim as well, so. I'm sorry, I asked about you and Tim as well. So with, based on Brian's motion, are we okay? Anyone else make, can we, is there someone that likes to make a second of that motion?
I'll second it.
Tim seconded it. All in favor? Aye.
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 All opposed? None? Congratulations. You guys have your, your variances.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Um, is there any other business in front of the board or any other comments from the board that?
Thank you again.
You're welcome. Is there anyone on the board that would like to make a motion to end the meeting?
I'll move to end it.
I'll move.
Is there a second? Someone? Thank you. All in favor? Aye. Opposed? So, Garrett, thank you all for joining us.